Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is June 1st, now 7:00 PM. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, please let us remain standing and take a moment of silence and remember Jason Winger, an 18-year member of the Suffering Hook and Ladder Company, who passed away in May. We honor his memory and we ask you to keep Jason's wife Jill and their three children, Tamar, McCullough, and Eli, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Have a seat. We also want us to make a quick statement that the recent events that have caused the current unrest in our country is very concerning to all of us. However, I want to reassure village residents to know that the Village of Suffering is proud to be named one of the 50 safest areas in New York. Our village was also listed as the safest municipality in Rockland County. The Suffering Police Department has been in the forefront of community policing. Suffering police officers know our residents and the residents know our offices on patrol, whether through school, sports, community groups, or everyday contacts. The Suffering Police Department routinely dedicates officers to address specific community and quality of life issues in a proactive manner through DARE and other policing activities. The Village of Suffering is a community where neighbors help neighbors as long as we continue to support one another with kindness and help those of us who are in need. The Village of Suffering will remain strong and will serve as a role model for other communities during these difficult times. So, thank you to the Suffering Police Department being in the forefront. That's the way I wanted to open up the meeting. Next up, the workshop meeting. The next workshop meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 PM. And the regular Village Board meeting of Trustees will be held by teleconference on Monday, July 6th at 7:00 PM. Do any of the trustees have a scheduling conflict with the July 6th meeting? Or would like to change it?
Ed, I thought we had discussed that maybe we should change it to Tuesday instead of Monday the other day.
Okay. The board members, Tuesday, July 7th at 7:00. Do we have any conflicts with changing it to July 7th?
Two things. One, I think you, is it Tuesday, June 23rd you mean, right? The workshop?
No, I'm talking about the next regular, oh, hold on, I'm sorry. No, the July meeting.
Right. The 7th might be an issue for me if we start at 7:00. It might be late. I have a meeting at 5:30 earlier than another location. I say another location will be on the computer.
Right.
I'm fine on the Monday. I do have a question. As Mr. Magrino pointed out, June 20th is not a Tuesday.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, for the workshop.
It should be June, it should be June 30th.
That makes more sense.
Okay, let's go back, I'm sorry, let's go back to the workshop. So, you're correct. The workshop meeting should be the last Tuesday, which is June 30th. But that's also, yep, that's good, June 30th. So, we're good with June 30th?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the July meeting, scheduled for July 6th, which is after the holiday. Would we like to move it to July 7th?
I'm fine with July 7th.
I'm good with July 7th.
I'm good.
I'm fine technically with either.
Okay.
What would be the reason to postpone from the 6th to the 7th? Just so I know.
It's the holiday weekend.
I see, okay. Now, are we anticipating these will be through Zoom as well? Or we don't know yet?
We don't know yet. So, we're scheduling it for, you know, either/or. Depending on the executive orders that are put forth.
Got it.
Is Charles Barone in?
Charles is here.
Okay, is he, you have a conflict, Charles? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Either date's good for me.
Okay, so let's make the move to July 7th, please. Amy, can you note that? July 7th, 7:00 PM. Okay, now it's 7:07. Make a motion to open a public hearing to consider the repeal of Local Law 5 of 2020.
Motion.
Excuse me, Mayor, do we need to do a roll call?
Oh geez, again, yes. I'm sorry about that. Let's have a roll call vote on, for the meeting. Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Megan Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Gerard.
Present.
Thank you for that. Roll call, all present. Okay, motion to open a public hearing to consider the repeal of Local Law Number 5.
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Second. Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to the repeal of Local Law 5? And if Michael, Mr. Janito, can just brief us on the repeal?
Yes, Mayor, as you know, that prior to the adoption of the budget, you passed a local law to override the tax levy cap. And that was done in the event that you did indeed have to override it and you had to adopt that law prior to adopting the budget. As it turns out, you adopted a budget that was below the tax cap and you now have the right to repeal that. And in fact, you have to do it, I think the deadline was June 12th to do it. But in any event, if you do it tonight, that's plenty of time to get it done.
Okay, is there anyone raising their hand from the public that would speak to it? No? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Steve Barone makes a motion to close the public hearing.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Trustee Corrigan, seconds.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion?
I just want to thank the board and everyone working together to reduce the budget enough to get below the 2% state mandated cap. This is, it was a fantastic achievement and everyone really worked hard.
Thank you. So, I have the resolution repealing Local Law 5 of 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, motions. Do I have a second?
Second, second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion passes. Now, 7:10. Like the motion to open a public hearing to consider the acceptance of the annual New York State DEC MS-4 report?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Gerard.
Trustee Gerard. Trustee Gerard, on a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to the MS-4, DEC MS-4 report? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, second.
Gerard, second.
Trustee Gerard, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I have the resolution here, accepting the New York State DEC annual MS-4 report. Do I have a motion?
We are not doing this well tonight.
There was a three-way tie.
Motion.
Trustee Barone, I have a second.
Second, Trustee Corrigan, I'm the only one left.
Trustee Corrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Janito, do you see Mr. Rela on?
Yes.
Oh, he is, okay.
And we've asked him to unmute.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Fred.
Once again, I'm listed as Mary on the, that's my wife. So, there's been quite a lot of discussion going on with Maria Frank, who's head of the Rockland County Community Development with the Community Development Block Grants. Specifically, there was a delay of this year's application due to the coronavirus, in which we were going to be applying for new sidewalks, curbs, and driveway aprons on West Maple Avenue. That, in my conversation with her, she's going to be releasing that application within the next couple of weeks. Once again, that's a $200,000 project and we're going to be applying for a grant for $180,000 and the village is going to be contributing the remaining 10%. The Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project, this is a large project. It's approximately $284,000, $284,000 in grants that we have received for it. And we have all the environmental approvals. The engineering and design has been done and that cost approximately $20,000. We can now, this is a reimbursement grant and in my conversations with Maria Frank, once again, she said we can submit for that reimbursement. So, I'll be working with Charles Sawicki and his staff and getting that paperwork in so we can recoup those funds. We mentioned the Parking Lot B project at the workshop. We have two grants for that, total $170,000 and we're going to start to move forward. On that, we're going to have to put that out to bid to get a firm in order to do that. But we got the okay to begin that project as well. Lastly, what I'd just like to say is we have the $125,000 backhoe grant that we rewarded, that's to Dazney and I'm working with them on acquiring the appropriate paperwork to begin that process. Okay, so that's it.
Wonderful.
That's great news. Thank you, Fred. Thank you for all the paperwork and grant applications. It's really benefiting the Village of Suffering directly and the residents. So, we look forward to the backhoe, the paving of the B lot and the sidewalks to be replaced. Great job, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Culture and Recreation, Ms. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. So, here is my update from Recreation. The Memorial Day Parade, as we know, was canceled last week, but I wanted to just tell everybody that we receive entries from local students from the Suffering Central Schools. We received a lot of pictures, a lot of drawings, a lot of poems, and a lot of great things from students talking about veterans and talking about what Memorial Day means to me. And it was a tremendous response. So, we want to thank the kids for taking part in that. I gave the entries over to our commander from the American Legion, Mike Burns, and I think they were all very pleased with it. So, for the Village of Suffering, I think it was a great thing for us to do that. And again, the kids, the kids' drawings and poems were fantastic. We're working with the Community Foundation. As you know, graduations are canceled this year. So, Connor School is doing their graduation virtually. And with the Community Foundation, we sent in an app, sent in a video of us giving the kids an award. So, that will be on June 10th. So, it's a little part of being part of the graduations this year is how we're doing that. We are working with the volunteer database still. We're updating the list of people that would like to volunteer in the community. It's an amazing group of people who have come together to volunteer in a time of need. We are sending out the Constant Contact emails, at least on Wednesdays and Fridays, and they've been tremendously received. We are putting up the posts on Facebook. So, we're trying to get the word out about upcoming events. And due to the social distance regulations, we have tried to be very creative in finding ways to keep residents involved. And we're doing a fantastic job with it. Between Elaine and Nancy and myself, we're really trying to get out there. So, this week alone, we have chair exercise classes at the gazebo. So, we're holding classes outside and we're doing it by moving people at least six feet apart. Chair exercise classes at the gazebo are on Mondays and Thursdays at 10:00. We have chair yoga at the gazebo. So, they bring the chairs out and Nancy does a class with them. Every day this week, there will be a class at 11:00. And then using Zoom, as we are here with the Village Board, we're using Zoom on Thursday and we get a lot of, a lot of great, you know, feedback on that as well. We have the Walking Club at Yorkshire Park. As I mentioned in the workshop, DPW did a fantastic job of fixing up the park. And I drove by there this evening. There's a lot of people using it. We have arrows, so people are going in one direction so to avoid clustering on the, on the path. But it's coming out really well. People really appreciate all the efforts the village is doing to make these little, you know, little pockets of exercise, little pockets of getting together, and it's coming out fantastic. This Wednesday will be the third time that we're doing Storytime at the gazebo. Ms. Jennifer from the Suffering Library is doing a fantastic job. She has a, she brings her books with her. We have people RSVPing to me. So, we have this week, we have three families of two people each, a child and a parent, or a child and two, a parent and two children coming. So, we have that under the amount of 10 people. And the families that are coming to the gazebo are ecstatic. It gets their children out for a couple of hours just by, you know, between leaving the house and getting to the park and seeing Ms. Jennifer. It's bringing a little normalcy back to families in the village and they're just thrilled about it. Yoga in the park started this evening. So, Monday nights at 6:30, there will be yoga in the park. And that again is social distancing. So, I just left there before I came onto the meeting and there are eight people plus Nancy. So, it's going very well. It's about an hour up at the gazebo. And then next Friday, we have a crafts, this Friday, I'm sorry, we have a crafts class starting at 9:30. And that will be open to, again, eight people and then Elaine will be nine and myself will be 10. So, that's, you know, that's open to everybody within the village. And then we just put up one of our newest events up on the, on Facebook this morning. We got it to the school's backpack on Friday and then we got it out in the Constant Contact. We're doing a chalk event. So, families are going to be able to do a drawing on their driveway. And we are inviting, I'm inviting everybody here while I have you sort of live. If the board would like to come and, and go around and see the drawings, we're going to have the addresses of where all of the participants will be. And I'm opening it up to Chief Osborne, to DPW, to see if you'd like to be part of it. The categories are most patriotic, most creative, most suffern. And because of all the great work that all of the emergency responders doing, are doing, we're having that as a category too. So, we're trying to really, you know, any families that have firefighters, have police officers, have DPW workers, we're just trying to show everybody the importance of what they're doing. So, that's going to be on June 11th. So, we're really looking forward to that. It's just a creative way of trying to get families involved and the recreation staff and again, any board members that would like to be part of this as well, to go around. We're going to take pictures and just see how, how the kids do. So, that's, I think, it for me right now, but things are, things are coming along. Things are really going very well.
Kathy, can you put me on that list, please, for June 11th?
Absolutely. So, we're going to go between four and six, Joe. Absolutely.
Okay, no problem.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Kathy, and thank you to the whole Recreation and your staff, keeping the residents engaged, keeping the children engaged, keeping the seniors engaged, keeping everyone engaged is, is great during these times. So, keep up the good work. I know I've been to a few of the events, the walking, the yoga. It is going very smooth and thank you very much for that and thank the staff.
I will. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Mayor, we have Jeremy Koffler, if you need an update from the Fire Department.
Okay, Mr. Chief Koffler, can you provide us with an update?
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Just one item on the agenda for tonight. It's the resolution to approve the 2019 Length of Service Award.
Okay, so I have that resolution in front of me, approving the Suffering Fire Department Service Award Program Report for 2019. The board has it in front of them. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? No. Okay, thank you, motion passes. Thank you to the Fire Department. Thank you, Jer, Chief Koffler. Great job.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
So, next up is Police Chief Clark Osborne. But once again, before, before he speaks, my opening remarks are to the village residents that we do not have any concern due to the fact that we do have one of the finest police departments in the county, in the state of New York here, protecting us. It's one of the oldest police departments. It's 126 years old. It polices a huge, not a huge community, but a big community with a large downtown business district, a train station, multifamily homes, single-family homes. We have a very diverse community, which is very well policed and protected and knows the police officers by first name most of the time. We do have an overtime concern, but that's due to the lack of the staffing, that we are down six to seven patrol officers and we find it more fiscally responsible to either pay out the overtime or hire more police officers. But at the same time, we're providing the best service possible. So, I believe that the way the police chief is running this department is the most fiscally responsible way to approach the policing. When you take into account salary and benefits for additional police officers, it would just be more costly to the village residents and the taxpayers. But we are definitely doing more with less. We are here, the police department is here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We all know the police officers that are out there. All I could say during these trouble, all the time, not just during these troubling times, support your local police department. They are the ones that support you. So, on that note, I would like to bring in Police Chief Clark Osborne for an update.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, board. Can you guys see him, you okay?
Yes, thank you, Chief.
And Mayor, thank you for those words, all of the board, for your support. We are proud to work in this community. We are facing, we have faced, we are continually facing some unprecedented times on all communities throughout the United States. And I, I do appreciate that support very much, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to give you a quick update. I'm just going to read something as well we prepared. In the month of April, we had 778 police calls and service plotters. In May, we had 753 police plotters and service calls. The one thing before I read my statement is about what was going on is on June 15th, we'll be having a Suffering High School senior parade through the Village of Suffering, which is great. We're looking forward to getting seniors with their families driving them. They're a lot up in the Vardis. I spoke to the Vardis after Mission Use their big lot. Through to the village and on the Marinade Spoke. I think some of those trustees are aware of it, it's been on Facebook. And we're asking you guys to be part of it, anybody to be part of it in the village. We're going to have these seniors be driven through a route through the village where the residents can come out, or village residents, and cheer them on. Obviously, they can't have a regular graduation. So, the parents came and approached the Marinade. We thought this is a great way to go about it and we think it's an awesome way. I have officers who are volunteering to come in at night, help out the seniors, because we feel strongly about what's going on and we know the severity of what's going on and the fact that they can't have a normal graduation. So, this is going to be two weeks from tonight, 6:30 PM, and I will get you more information when we get closer to the board. So, I just want to make sure, even if there's any questions on that before I continue with my reading, anything you guys want to ask. Thank you. Just a statement here, the past several months have been a busy time for all. We are at the Suffering Police Department, we are no exception to this. 2020 has been a very trying time for law enforcement and first responders. And on top of our recent pandemic, we have had several high-profile incidents here in the Village of Suffering since January. Our year started out with the missing person case, which went nationwide after 17-year-old Wilson Atts basically disappeared from a village streets and was unable to be located. We worked this case for several weeks with the assistance of the New York State Police. After coordinating an 80-person search team, a volunteer search team, we unfortunately located Wilson and deceased within the confines of the Mawaw River off of Main Avenue with the assistance of the New York State Adirondack Volunteer Search and Rescue Team of State of New York. We then, shortly after that incident, after several weeks of investigation, conducted a large drug raid here in the Village of Suffering, Herprairie Avenue with the assistance of Rockland County District Attorney's Drug Task Force. And we seized a large amount of narcotics, along with the stolen loaded Glock 9mm handgun and over $50,000 in cash. They just drug made in village streets. In this case, this citizen convicted felon, was charged with numerous crimes and is still currently in jail on his charges. In April, we made an arrest for burglary of property on Washington Avenue after a woman woke up in the early morning hours at observing one man standing in a kitchen. A woman called 911 frantically and within two minutes, our officers arrived, located a suspect leaving the residence and placed him under arrest for multiple charges. On top of that, on Good Friday, just a while ago in April, we handled this drug, emotionally disturbed person incident on our gap where the suspect barricaded himself and his residence and was armed with a high-powered assault-type weapon. The assistance of the Rockland County SWAT team, which we are part of, after several hours of negotiations, we trained hostage negotiators on our team. And with that communication, we launched tear gas projectiles into the residence, which caused the suspect exit the residence and be taken into custody without further incidents. These are just some of the incidents we have handled over the past few months and do not include the other arrests or service calls we've talked to every day. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the current pandemic that all of us have been dealing with. With everything going on for the last few months, I'd really come to the board with a thorough update because we have actually been overwhelmed, and you guys have as well. Our department has been in the fun lines of this battle since day one as we had the first death in New York State outside of New York City where four of our officers were exposed and quarantined to COVID-19 while performing CPR on this person who tragically passed away as residents. On top of that, we've been working on a clock every day and night to fund it to numerous COVID-19 incidents and deaths here in the village and about all of us are sick and exposed, including myself, as a tested positive for the COVID-19 vaccines. We actually responded to over 200 medical calls during this time alone, many of them were COVID-related. We proudly handled these duties, understood the importance of being proactive, helping our residents out every step of the way. In addition, we have completed over 70 birthday drive-bys for children in our community during this pandemic. As we understand, they couldn't have birthday parties. We have done numerous drive-by processions and funeral processions for own residents who have lost their fight to COVID-19. We also assisted our residents with gift cards and Easter baskets for food and other essential items. I must also mention, on top of the COVID issues, we also networked together with the normal, everyday police calls we handle, including domestic disputes, alarms, investigations, auto accidents, and everything else. On a good note, I'd like to thank Mayor Markounis and all the Village Board for ensuring that our police officers had the proper personal protective. village board for ensuring that our police officers had the proper personal protective gear, which we do. And I would also like to thank Charles Sawicki, Joe Hunt, and the rest of our DPW crew, who are in contact with every day doing this, which sanitize our station on a daily basis. And I truly believe, no matter how times we're exposed, by having those, by having DPW do what they did, most of us safe. Having prisoners in a police lockup during a pandemic is no easy thing to do. But thanks to our DPW who cleaned everything up, after every situation, we did very well. Final notes, I want to thank the mayor for an daily update on the COVID pandemic. There was pretty trying for everybody at that time with everything going on. I want to thank the board for supporting us, which you have faith in us to do what was right. I want to assure every single resident in the Village of Suffolk, and business owner, and and my board in front of me, that the Suffolk Police Department is ready to handle any and all incidents that we may face in the future. Our department provides itself with a community relationship we have been developing for years, as well as our working relationships with all of our local, county, state, and federal law firms and partners, which we have a tremendously earned relationship. And on that note, I hope I didn't bore you. I just wanted to give you a thorough update, because it all came to you guys overwhelmed me, and I just felt I thought you didn't hear that. So thanks to all of you. Have any questions, please, Jeffrey.
Chief, I'd like to say, you know, you did present a great case there, and and thank you for your dedicated service to you and the staff, to all the police officers, the sergeants, the lieutenants, and yourself for this continued mission outside your normal duties of, you know, COVID is unbelievable, and the coronavirus, and and how you handled the department through this pandemic. Excellent job. And the membership, the officers down there 24/7, you know, it's, it truly is unbelievable. And then, possible, unexpected, that you are prepared for. As you said, reassuring your residents that we are prepared here in the Village of Suffolk for anything, from a pandemic, to a birthday parade, to a funeral procession. Thank you, chief, and thank you, men and women of the Suffolk Police Department. Okay. At this time, Michael, I'm going to open up the to audience participation, and I'm trying to limit the time to each person's comments to three minutes, if that's okay with the board. Board, do you have any objections to the three minutes?
No.
No.
No, no.
And Mayor, just, Mayor, just, if I could, for the audience that's maybe new to Zoom, if they're on a computer, a tablet, or a similar device, if they look on the little section called Participants at the bottom of their screen, they'll click on a small icon that has a raised hand, and it's labeled Raised Hand, and that's how we know that you would like to speak. If you are using a smartphone with the Zoom app, you scroll to the bottom left and tap on the icon labeled Raised Hand. And if you are on a telephone without any other connection, just press star nine, and it'll raise your hand. So we're ready to go whenever the public is, Mayor.
Okay, if you see any raised hands, please introduce them by their name and address. Ask them their name and address, please.
Yes, at the moment, here we go. This one is, we have one here. Just give me one second to start them up. Okay, this is coming in as Michael's iPad. You're unmuted now. You can unmute yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you for all those great directions you gave, Mr. Tinio. First topic I I'd like to start on is the quarry. I was wondering if anyone on the board has any conversations with people in reference to the quarry, officially or unofficially, on, you know, what the purpose is, if the Village of Suffolk will be getting any monies. I'm not counting tax monies, because everyone will be getting tax monies, okay? And if there's been, I want to know where we're at with that. We we see in the paper that the town of Ramapo has said that it's sold with a pendency of 90 days, I think. And I think that I think that we need to, I think by us not having a full-time attorney, which we don't right now, I think is a crucial mistake to the future of Suffolk. I think this board needs to look and hire attorney, an attorney. Mr. Magrino has done an excellent job, but he is a full-time attorney for another municipality. You hired another part-time attorney, but he's a labor, he's for the Labor Department, and he's probably been doing other things for you also. You need to get an attorney. It is reckless to not have an attorney, number one. But I I think you need to really start making reports on this quarry. If anyone has any information, if anybody has talked to anyone, the residents and the public has a right to know, okay? You know, over the last, I joined Facebook today, and I did one of my first posts, and I find it as a as a good thing, an educational thing. But I just want to point out that taxes went up, our savings went down, because you took away what you were investing there, and our services went down. I put a post on there about opening the Suffolk Pool, because I feel the children of this community are not being served by what the Recreation Department is doing alone. It's great that eight people are doing yoga, as Kathy Mills mentioned there, but eight people is not the hundreds of people that the pool would use. And I think it's it's a disservice to keep most of you, I mean, you laid off one part-time person to keep them all and then not have the pool. You shouldn't, one has to go, one had to go with the other. Since you closed the pool, and all these other events aren't going through, even with even with the Veterans Day you had the other day, Mr. Markounis, there was a limited amount of people there. So you didn't need the help of of the of local government. They're very qualified over there, right? So I think, I think we definitely have to have conversation, open conversation with the public in front of this, okay? Because I will, I will stay on it as much as I can. I don't see, I need to say much about the police department, because I I think everyone's on board now. If you go look at their roles, you'll see over the years, their full-time employment has gone down multiple years. So if their overtime goes up, it makes sense. So the only department where I think full-time workers has gone up, full-time workers is Recreation Department. So I'm not here to insult or hurt anyone, but I think you, I think you should take the Suffolk Pool and make that the home base right now. They can do the yoga lessons, the exercise classes in the mornings or at night, and you've got plenty of room to use the outside area for social distancing, okay? We know there may be a problem with money, because we didn't put it in the budget. But maybe we can do a a a community, a government, work together, and try to raise money. But to have those kids not have that pool. And now, now, besides that, you have other people saying they didn't get their proper raises, and they want more raises too. I mean, so everyone's going to win, except for the kids. And that's not fair. These other events you're doing might be okay here and there, but they want their pool. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue on it, and I'm willing as a resident to help work on it. I'm willing to come up with even a few hundred-dollar donations, and maybe we get other people. But we can't just walk away from this. You had a family on Facebook, say, today.
I have 30 seconds, Mr. Crowley.
They'd be willing with lifeguards, okay? They would be willing to do lifeguards, okay? And I don't agree with the three minutes. I think it's a disgrace. You don't have anything here. I think, I think doing that, you didn't do, actually, you didn't do it legally how you did it, but I'm gonna adhere to it, okay? But I'll do it on Facebook tomorrow, since you won't let me say it today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, I don't see anybody else at the moment. We're going to see if there's anybody. We'll give them one, a couple more seconds, maybe.
Okay.
But no, actually, no, we don't see anybody else there. Nobody else is there.
Okay, we'll close the public participation. At this time, we'll have the Department of Public Works, Mr. Charles Sawicki, provide us with an update.
Okay, one moment, Charles. You should be unmuted now.
Okay, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, the first item would be payment authorization for application of payment number two in the amount of $15,080.30 to Tam Enterprises for Phase Two Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project.
Okay, so I have the application for payment number two. Resolution authorizing payment number two to Tam Enterprises for the Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project Phase Two. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is payment authorization for application of payment number three in the amount of $44,232.71 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the Phase 10 roadway improvements project. Do I have a motion on the resolution authorizing payment number three to Tilcon New York Phase 10 roadway improvements?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, trustee Gerard. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Payment authorization for application of payment number three in the amount of $7,851.45 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the Village Hall Police Department Parking Lot Project.
Now, the resolution authorizing payment three to Tilcon New York for Village Hall and Police Parking Lot Improvement Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone.
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Corrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, creation of the position of clerk in the DPW Administrative Office effective June 1st, 2020.
Now, the motion, creating the position of clerk in DPW Administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Second. Any further discussion? I would like to thank the staff of the DPW and the clerks in the DPW for all the dedication and hard work they do. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Any, any no's? Any opposes? No, motion passes.
Thank you. Establishment of the position of Chief Operator Supervisor Grade 1B in the Water Department and appointing Stan Dubrinsky to Chief Operator 1B pending final review of Rockland County Department of Personnel.
I have the resolution appointing Stanley Dubrinsky to the position of Chief Operator 1B Supervisor. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Gerard.
No.
Trustee Gerard, second. On the discussion. Once again, I would like to thank Stanley Dubrinsky, our chief water operator, for providing safe and clean water to the Village of Suffolk. Thank you. Stanley, you're doing a great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, establishment of the position of Assistant Chief Operator Supervisor 2B in the Water Department, and appointing John Conklin to Assistant Chief Operator 2B pending final review by Rockland County Department of Personnel.
Now, the motion, appointing John Conklin to the position of Assistant Operator Grade 2B Supervisor. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert on the discussion. Once again, thank you, Johnny Conklin, for your dedicated years of service to this Village of Suffolk, and keep providing the clean water to our village residents. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Appointment of Mr. Joe McAtee to Automotive Mechanic 1 Position effective June 8th, 2020.
Now, the resolution appointing Joe McAtee to the position of Automotive Mechanic 1 effective June 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, trustee Albert on the second. Do I have any further discussion? Once again, I would like to say thank you to Joe McAtee, great guy, hard worker, dedicated to the Village of Suffolk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, appointment of Mr. Anello Vacchanel, Vacchello. I always have a difficult time with pronunciation of his name, to Motor Equipment Operator 1 Position effective June 8th, 2020.
I have the resolution appointing Anello Vacchiano to the position of Motor Equipment Operator 1 effective June 8th. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone on the discussion. Once again, thank you, Mr. Vacchiano, for doing a great job here in the Village of Suffolk. Keep up the great work. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, appointment of Patrick Karati to Maintenance Helper Position effective June 8th, 2020.
Now, the resolution appointing Patrick Karati to the position of Maintenance Helper effective June 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, you can't beat her. On the discussion.
Not when it comes to my DPW, guys.
On the discussion.
And the water and sewer.
There you go. Okay, once again, thank you, Patrick Karati. Another great job here doing at the Village of Suffolk. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the board very much. That's it for me.
Thank you, Charles. Keep up the good work up there in the DPW.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, next, the trustees' update. Trustees, anything?
The only thing I'm wondering, Ed, is if maybe we shouldn't all gather and talk about the pool and see, you know, how we all feel about it.
Okay, how about we do that tomorrow? You want to, you want to, want to call tomorrow? We'll talk about it, or whatever you want to do.
Sure, that sounds great.
Give me a shout. Yeah, I'll be here, okay?
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Is there any word from the county as far as guidance on a pool?
Well, the guidance is that they're opening municipal pools, but they don't have the guidance of
Right.
Guidance. There's no guidance. But the pools, they say they're going to allow to open, but we're awaiting guidance, so we don't know what the guidance is, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And I believe Attorney Glickel would like to speak.
I was just going to add something first, and I apologize, Mr. Glickel. But being that the pool is majority, the majority of the costs of the pool are people who have, you know, families who who buy, what's the word I'm looking for here?
Pool pass?
The pass, the pool pass. Thank you. I couldn't think of the word. I'm wondering if there's, you know, an opportunity without affecting the budget, if it does become feasible to open the pool. And again, I'm, I was awaiting county guidance on this or whatever. But, you know, perhaps either limited days or limited hours, something where we wouldn't need to have any village, any amount from the regular budget, so that if we need to add this solely on, you know, people who buy pool passes, maybe for a limited period, it might work. I don't know.
And, and to add to that, I just, I think that we also need to ensure to everyone that this was a one-year thing, and it was truly driven by the, by the timing of our budget, as well as the severity of COVID-19 at the time that we had to make the decision. It wasn't so much as a financial decision as a safety and health decision. I, I mean, that's how I feel. I don't want to put words in the mouth to the other board members, but I I just think that we all need to, you know, we can just all look at it, and, you know, perhaps we can see what we can do, and that's, you know, the best way to go about it.
Maybe we can come up with a solution.
Yeah, and we, and we have to, you know, follow the the state guidance on how we reopen, and see what approximate dates that is, and see what's, see what's feasible. And so we should talk about it more.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Glickel?
Yes.
You were going to speak.
Are we still, are we still under trustees, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, we're still under trustees.
Okay, got you. Go ahead, Mr. Glickel.
Well, what would you like me to talk about outside the executive session?
I thought we were talking about the process, the, for the public's and the board's knowledge of the foil process that the village follows.
Yes. Currently, the way that your village code reads appeals appeals from a denial of a foil request are to be heard by the board of trustees. That's the language that the current village code contains. That provision that would send the matter to the entire board is unnecessarily cumbersome, in my opinion. I think that if you take a look at section eighty-nine of the Public Offices Law, which talks about appeals from a denial of access to records. The state statute provides that the appeal could be taken within thirty days in writing to the head, chief executive, or governing body of the entity or the person therefore designated by such head, chief executive, or governing body. And typically, most municipalities would have, just as you have designated within section two sixteen of your village code where you've designated in the case of village of suffering, your clerk is your records access officer for foil purposes, which is typical. You might also, by resolution, designate an individual rather than the entire board of trustees to serve as the foil appeals officer for the village. In my experience, oftentimes that person is a town attorney or village attorney, but it needn't be. It can be anyone with some familiarity of the foil process who hopefully, when presented with the appeal, would also seek the advice of counsel in fashioning an answer to that appeal. So my recommendation is twofold. One would be to amend your local laws contained in the village code section two sixteen to provide that an appeal, the foil appeal, would be answered by the village board or its designated appointee. Its designated foil appeals officer. And if you do that, we're simultaneously with that adopt a resolution appointing whoever you like
There you go.
to serve in that capacity. What happens then, of course, is you don't have one, the gathering waiting, waiting until the board next meets either in workshop or in a regularly scheduled meeting, which could very easily take you outside of the parameters, the statutory parameters, for answering the appeal, which is kind of short. By statute, it's supposed to be answered within ten days. That didn't happen here. Of course, there's an out to that, so long as the requestor receives notice that, yes, we have your appeal. In this case, of course, you had the factor of COVID-19, which really messed with everybody's schedule, but also the uncommon situation where your appeal is being forwarded for determination by the board of trustees, whereas otherwise, it would just, you know, be shipped to your foil appeal officer or designee for response. It may still not be within ten days, but would probably shorten the process somewhat. And basically, these things are not subject to debate, okay? The law is what it is. If there's a denial of a record, in this case, there really wasn't, regardless of what the requestor feels. It was a situation where the record sought does not exist and the request for the creation of a record in the form of a statement from the trustee to the effect that he intentionally misled the public definitely is not within the parameters of foil. So it's really not a matter that's open to debate. If the denial is continued in the appeal process, all the statute requires is that it be handled seasonably, perhaps unreasonably seasonably, given the way government works, and that there be an explanation for the denial. And there are exceptions to foil requests. Most frequently, those exceptions deal with invasion of right to privacy and ongoing criminal investigations, records pertaining to ongoing investigations that might somehow interfere with the administration of justice. And another typical cause for denial would be access to enter in intra-office communications, which oftentimes are viewed as only part of the deliberative process and do not reflect any final decision or direction by the agency or municipality. To the extent those inter or intra-office communications do reflect a final determination or a direction for some action, then they are accessible and subject to foil disclosure. So where something legitimately exists and legitimately is being denied, the reason for the denial has to be set forth. And then, of course, the requestor, having exhausted that administrative appeals route, has the right to file an Article seventy-eight proceeding, and only if the denial is completely from Mars, which by the way, every day is becoming more and more obtainable, if you guys watched the launch this weekend to the space station. I'm not sure if we're going to get there before I pass away, but I'm hoping that we do. But assuming that doesn't come out of left field, then chances are the petitioner would not be accorded attorney's fees, which is something that a petitioner would be entitled to in the instance of a flat-out wrongful or arbitrary denial of access. Having said all that, Reader's Digest version, amend section two sixteen to allow the board to appoint a designee to answer foil appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Glickel. I think that's a great recommendation and the board, we should explore that amending the code and appointing a, and foil appeals officer, someone that has intimate knowledge with the foil process. So thank you for that.
Well, they should have some knowledge.
Some knowledge.
Even when the access, the appeals officer in Clarkstown was the town attorney, who was one of the best town attorneys ever. Passed away a couple of months ago, Murray Jacobson. He had a ghostwriter, who shall remain nameless, but who appears before you this evening.
All right, Mr. Ghost, ghostwriter.
Of course, he also had veto power, but you know.
All right, well, thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Glickel in regards to the foil process? Okay. All right, let's move on to the mayor's resolution. I have a resolution here.
I'm sorry, Ed, we're still under trustees. I just wanted to see in, in, in light of Mr. Curly's earlier question, can you provide an update to the public on the status of attorney?
I briefly spoke this afternoon with Mr. Glickel in regards to appointing the the village attorney. I'm going to further discuss it as planned with him to see how to proceed in a fashion that would be amenable to the board and to get over this hurdle. So, yes. I'm going to continue that discussion most likely tomorrow with Mr. Glickel. And then from there, guide me in the process and then update the board, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's got to be a collaborative determination towards to and, and the mayor, I'm sure, is, is in agreement. He is the appointing authority and the board, of course, must approve the appointment. So everybody's involved and it's really, again, a deliberative process that you all will be engaged in. And, you know, hopefully, I mean, you know, attorney, attorneys are abundant. Hopefully, you'll all be able to agree on a selection for village attorney. But it is important that it's somebody that the mayor feels he can work with and interact with perhaps on a more regular basis than, than the trustees are expected to or even able to. And that's all I have to say about that.
And then, Ed, just one more thing. You're going to be giving an update or do you have any updates on the query quest, on the query question? Has, has anybody given you anything from Raupo or?
Other than that they're in their due diligence period, the prospective buyer is, you know, waiting to close on the property. I know it was in the newspaper that it was sold. It was sold, you know, it's under contract, but they're waiting for the, for the referendum to clear.
Okay.
And from there, they would have to come to the village of suffering.
Okay, and I missed that. So who was, who is the potential buyer?
I don't recall their name right offhand, the corporation, I'm sorry. I don't have it on, on my fingertips here.
Okay.
Yeah. I called the supervisor about it last week, two weeks ago, because somebody mentioned that it was sold and I know it was being sold, but it didn't close, had to do with an enforcement issue. So we, they are working through it and hopefully they do close, get it back on the tax rolls and get it up and running.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that a little bit more. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're doing well here. I have the resolution in front of me. Authorizing Frederick J. Rela to provide grant application services to the village of suffering. So the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the consulting agreement with Frederick J. Rela and Company Suffering New York to provide grant application services to the village of suffering from July one, twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert on the second. Any further discussion?
I was just curious on the dates. Is it like July first? It's, it's not the beginning of the fiscal year or anything like that? Is it just an arbitrary or is it just a continuation or how?
It's actually a continuation and it's from July one.
Okay, I was just wondering why it didn't line up, let's say, with our fiscal year or something like that.
Maybe we should get it in line with our fiscal year. It's a good idea. Do that maybe next month, next year. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rela. Another, you know, as we said, keep those, that grant money rolling in. Thank you for your dedication to the village of suffering.
Good work.
Good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Motion, trustee Barone.
If I could be, did you want to mention the possibility of another meeting or?
Oh, yeah, I had that in my mind. Hold on, before we go into an executive session, let me just. You know what, Mr. Magrino, let me call you on that.
Sure.
To the difference in the phase one and phase two. Just let me give you a call before. I'll be able to call the board if we need to call a special meeting and, and poll the board.
You got it.
All right, thank you. Motion to go into an executive session with Mr. Glickel.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, second.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, motion passes. We're all back in regular session. So I have the resolutions in, in front of me, which you all have. According, according, Michael Janito benefits pursuant to Rule Three and Article Four D, the employment standards and benefits of the village of suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next, resolution, according, Kathy A. Mills benefits pursuant to Rule Three, Article Four D of the employment standards and benefits of the village of suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, trustee Gerard. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. You know what, just, so who was, who moved that? Trustee Albert?
Yes.
And Gerard on the second, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then on the first one? Was it, was it trustee Albert?
It was me again on the first one. I don't remember who seconded.
Albert. And trustee Barone, correct. Okay. One last thing in closing. I received numerous phone calls and accolades for the DPW and that's really what I wanted to say, that numerous calls and comments on the outstanding service that the DPW, the street department has provided during the COVID emergency. It really is a phenomenal job that, that street department and all DPW workers have been doing and, and they are it is remarkable by, by the village residents. So thank you and thanks to the DPW. So that's, and we applaud you also. I mean, it's just running so smooth. Thank you very much. That's it. Anybody else have anything? Motion to close?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No one opposes? All right, thank you very much, everyone. Take care during the week.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a safe day and weeks to come.